Sorry.
I will go ahead and call the meeting of Monticello School District. Order and please stand for the Fudge of Allegiance.
Fudge of Allegiance to the Fide, the United States of America. To recall that for which is one nation, one people, and liberty and justice.
And I will ask for an approval of the agenda with just a very minor change that we're going to hear from the student representatives along with Mr. Revnik during our activities.
It's all moved, second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes six to zero. We did not have any citizens comments tonight. And so now I can ask for an approval on the consent agenda. Board members, you would have received everything in the packet. If there's anything that you wish to discuss or pull out, now would be the time to do it. Otherwise, I seek a motion to approve.
It's all moved, second.
Made by Melissa, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes six to zero. You are Student Representative Port and our Activities Update.
Start, jump in.
Yes.
All right. First of all, thanks for having us here today. It's been a really fun fall at Monticello High School getting the high, excuse me, the High School League sports back with Minnesota State High School League and our upperclassmen participating has just been outstanding to see the change in our kids from last year to this fall at the high school. And it's, the entire environment has changed. I think the girls would say the same thing. Lots of smiles on their faces and it's just been a really fun fall at Monticello High School with the activities that we've had. Just gonna quickly go over everything. Lots of success and probably one of the reasons why everyone's in a pretty good mood at the high school right now. Boys and girls cross country both finished second in the Mississippi Eight. There's eight schools in the Mississippi Eight Conference. So they both finished second. And then in sections, they were up against eight schools. They both finished second and advanced to the state tournament. At the state tournament, the boys also finished second overall in the state for our class. And Big Lake in our conference actually won. And they were the team that had beat our boys earlier in the year. And it was a close race at state, but Big Lake took first and we got second. So it was pretty cool for our conference. And then our girls took fifth place overall in the state tournament. So both programs did just an outstanding job. Our boys GPA in cross country was the highest in the conference. It was a 3.82 GPA. And girls were right up there with the 3.81 GPA. Boys and girls soccer both finished second in the Mississippi Eight Conference as well. Good numbers in both and they're both really fun teams to watch in our stadium. Boys won their first section game, but the girls were upset in sections. Girls had the highest GPA in the conference with the 3.74 GPA. And the boys had a 3.24 GPA. Girls tennis, we finished sixth in the conference out of the eight schools. An impressive 3.76 GPA. No one advanced in individuals in tennis this year. Football, we finished six and four. We won our division by going four and O. So we are conference champs in football. We beat Irondale in our first section game. We lost 14 to eight at Rogers in the semifinals. And Rogers has now advanced and they're in the final four at state. So we were very close. We had a couple plays at the end of the game that we threw passes into the end zone that were just tipped away. So very close to beating Rogers and advancing in football. So it was a fun year in football. Our GPA in football, also the highest out of all the schools in our division with a 3.33 GPA. Volleyball, great season, just wrapped up on Saturday. We're the Mississippi Eight Champions. We're co-champions with Big Lake. We were the section champions. And at the state tournament, we're the consolation champion. So we lost our first match at state and then we went on and won our next two in consolation. So we ended up fifth at the state tournament. The girls had an impressive GPA, 3.65. It was just a fun season, our first trip to the state tournament. They did an outstanding job. And Natalie was one of our key players on the team. So I'm gonna just ask you to say a few words regarding volleyball.
Um, yeah, it was a really cool experience. I think that, I think a lot of the girls felt like, a lot of the community and our teachers and our parents really all came around us. We got treated pretty good the past weekend. We got a party bus down to the state banquet. Then we got a bunch of goody bags all along the way. And it was just really cool to see all of the students back in the stands and cheering for us and participating in the themes and cheering loud. It was just a really cool experience. It was something I will definitely never forget. So that was really nice.
All right, girls swimming and diving still going on. They were the conference champs, undefeated in dual competition. We took second on Saturday at sections. We have four swimmers who have advanced to the state tournament. Lorna Belcheck, she's a senior. Adeline and McKenna Beigler. Adeline's in seventh grade and McKenna is in ninth grade. They're our head coach's daughters. And our assistant coach, her daughter Rose Urick, she's a sophomore, advanced to state as well. They will go down and practice on Thursday and compete on Friday and then hopefully Saturday in the finals at the U of M for state swimming. Girls, 3.62 GPA, another impressive GPA. Brings me into fine arts here. Just a lot going on right now with clubs and fine arts at the high school. And kinda had to start over with some of them due to COVID and lack of participation or the ability to participate for some of our students. And now they're back and they're really thriving. So first one I want to talk about real quick is musical. It's already started this fall. We have lots of students participating. They're doing a high school musical. And it's turned out to be a little bit of a challenge with filming and going offsite and going around the community, putting this together. And we've had some students that are probably signed up for too many activities right now. So they've actually put things on a little bit of a pause so that some of the students were just feeling a little stressed with everything going on. And they're going to get back together after one act and finish up in February and then do the showing in late February before spring sports start. And that came from the advisor, Mr. Herfindal, who couldn't be here tonight because he's getting ready for the choir concert. And also, he met with the students on Friday and that's what they came up with together to just take a little pause. They were just a little overwhelmed. Many of the students are also in one act. And one act already starts next week. So they've just got a lot going on right now. Student council, our numbers are back up. And they just did a great job this fall with all the activities with homecoming week and all the things we've had going on. So it's fun to see and also to see a lot of underclassmen getting involved in student council. Interact, same thing. There's over 60 students at our first meeting and they're laying out what they would like to do this year for fundraising and, not fundraising, for community work, I should say, where they're going out and volunteering and trying to make a difference, not only in our community, but at the state and even international level. So the students take the lead on that and decide where they want to volunteer. DECA already started. They're off to a good start. They have strong upperclassmen participation. They were looking to recruit some freshmen and sophomores to get them involved. And I haven't heard where they're at with that, but I know we've made announcements at school and we're trying to get a few more students involved in DECA. Last school board meeting, a new club was approved, FCC LA. And they are going next week. And the fax department, they're working on getting students excited about the opportunities that they will have for them if they join that club and participate. First Robotics, I've had students stop in. They're excited to get that going. We've posted it. And I think we're close to hiring an advisor for First Robotics. Hopefully, they apply and we'll get that person in place. And that starts after the holiday break. And math team, they've already started competing. We have lots of kids on math team and we're really strong this year. And we had a student, Thor Lemke, who is a junior, have a perfect score on the first math competition in trig. So Thor excels in math and he's leading our math team right now, which is pretty cool. Knowledge Bowl, Courtney Roach, new first-year counselor at the high school, has stepped up. She's gonna be our new Knowledge Bowl advisor. And that'll start again after the holiday break. Yearbook, great participation. They met their first deadline with Jostens. And we've had photographers at many of our fall events. Kids have been really excited to get involved and help with yearbook. And last year, our yearbook was one of the best I've seen since I've been at the high school. Winter sports, they're off and running. Girls hockey, we actually have a home hockey game tomorrow night and then again on Thursday. Dance, boys hockey, girls basketball and gymnastics are all practicing. Next week, boys basketball and wrestling will get started. And then the last sport to start this winter is boys swimming on November 29th because the girls are just wrapping up here. This fall, we did a lot hosting to showcase our beautiful facilities at Monticello. We hosted section finals in volleyball and soccer. And then we hosted four games for the Minnesota State High School League in soccer, two girls and two boys. And then we hosted two nights of football last week, Thursday and Friday. Today, at the high school, we did our first signing day for seniors that are signing for college. We had five girls sign today. And that was, that was really cool. So we had Kennedy Beigler and Callie Finkbiner both signed in softball. We had Hannah, or Hannah sister, Megan Wetter and Hallie Pearson Holker signed in volleyball. And Lucy Schaefer signed to play soccer. So pretty cool to get five kids signed and many more signed in our winter and spring. So it's been a busy, but extremely fun fall at the high school. And I'll let these guys add anything that they have.
Revnik.
Yeah.
Uh, he pretty much went through a lot of the things, but I just wanna go over some things over these past few weeks. So with Halloween kind of coming up two weeks ago, we wanted to do something fun at the high school. So one of the things we did sort of for the homeroom classes was a door decorating contest. It was a fall theme. And the winner got a $10 gift card for Target. And I believe the winner was Ms. Schenzer. Her door was amazing. I don't know if you guys saw pictures of it. It was like s'mores and it was really well done. They did like toilet papers, like the marshmallows. I really do recommend checking out pictures of it. Another thing we did sort of for students was a costume contest. Obviously, it was appropriate costumes and fun. Students got to, every student was able to take a picture of their costume and submit a form if they wanted to be involved in the contest. The student council was responsible for choosing the best costume for a specific category, scariest, best couple, best group. And the rest of the school board, student board, was able to vote on those costumes and see who was the best. And winners would also get a $10 Target gift card, which was kind of fun, you know? Even if you didn't win, it was fun to dress up. Did you dress up? Yeah, I dressed up with like my friend. What'd you do?
My eyes.
I did, I think, an angel and a devil costume with my partner. It was fun. First quarter has wrapped up. And now we're entering second quarter. And I have to say that I'm impressed by the way students this year have dealt with wrapping up a first quarter and sort of entering the second half of our first semester. Students, we've have, we've adapted well, I think, with these changes, especially, you know, after COVID and kind of coming back to this school with a lot of students again. I think we've done an amazing job sort of interacting with our teachers and with our fellow classmates. I'm very proud of what my fellow classmates have done. And not just only with connections and communication, I think we've been doing pretty well academically. Students who have, you know, fallen behind have, you know, certain gotten the courage to talk with their teachers and to make some extra time to study more or to ask questions that they need to. So all in all, I say we've been doing pretty well for this first quarter. And I have high hopes for second quarter. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you so much for your time and for having us on again. Thank you.
Any question?
Thank you. Um, I was just gonna touch up on our Unified Club. We started it a couple weeks ago. Our first meeting was a really big hit. We were like expecting like 20-ish people, but we got like around 50. So that was a really big, and we're already starting to plan some activities. I was obviously gone last week for the state volleyball tournament, but we're planning some upcoming activities this week and next week revolving Thanksgiving. Just trying to get the school involved. But just like what Zucaina said, I think everyone's really starting to get excited for school and just glad to be back. And like, I know us seniors are starting to figure out what we wanna do after high school. And we're counting down the days for graduation. So it's, it's looking really good.
It's 101, by the way.
And Zucaina said she had an interview with Harvard tomorrow. So she, I'm just like sweating just thinking about, if I had an interview with Harvard, it would be, I'd be sweating. But you're just calm and cool.
I heard that too. So good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And next up, we have the Minnesota State High School League Resolution.
The High School League has their grant that they brought back. In their foundation, they have some money that they're giving back to the school. So this is a grant we have always applied for when they've made it available. It's to help offset the costs for students that are qualified for free and reduced lunch because then their activities are free. So at the high school last year, we had a total of 141 students on free and reduced lunch. And 33 of those participated in activities. So there's no charge for them to participate. So if we fill out this grant, if you approve that today, not all of the money, but a portion of the money will come back to Monticello High School and it'll go to Tina Burkholder and to our general fund. So in the past, we have averaged right around $1,000 getting back from the High School League, which just helps offset it a little bit. Any questions on that?
Jack physically goes to the department and then Tina takes care of it.
I just wanted to point out that does not go to the Activities Department.
Somebody have the resolution? Do we need to read the resolution or just do a motion to approve?
I think we need to read it and approve it by roll call vote.
I can read it. Therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of Independent School District Number 882 supports the school's application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees.
Second.
Resolution read by Jamie, seconded by Melissa. Want a roll call vote for this?
Yes, please.
All in favor by roll call. Jamie?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Candy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeff? All, resolution passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, thanks for your presentation too. There's nobody that delivers more passion to any part of our program than you. And probably why I got sick, I tried to keep up with you and get to all as many advances you get to. I couldn't keep up with you. So you're hard act to follow.
Now we've got Tina with our enrollment update.
All right. Tonight, we have our enrollment projection presentation for you to review. Help us move forward in our revised budget and forecasting process for the next two to five years. So through this presentation, the next slide Gavin, we'll have a review of the K-12 enrollment as of October 1st. Look at our resident enrollment, open enrollment, our fall versus spring, what happens during the year, other projection data, look at how we projected this year's enrollment, and then look at the next year's projection. So the first slide has just a historical look at our enrollment. And as you can see, the line is pretty steady of what our enrollment has been. We haven't grown by leaps and bounds by maybe some of our neighboring districts have done. So that line is pretty flat, but it's still kind of pointing upward. Next slide, we have our enrollment change from year to year summarized for the last five years. So we, as of October 1st this year, we added, or we increased 53 students. Last year, we lost 101 students. So it was about a 1.29% increase this year compared to last year. But overall, that five-year trend has not been very big, just under 2%. Then we'll look at our resident enrollment, students that live within the district. And here's a five-year snapshot. So this, or last year, it looks at last year's data because that's the only data that's kind of been finalized by the state. But schools everywhere have seen a drop in the resident enrollment. And the resident enrollment are kids that are actually enrolled in public education. So if they're homeschooled, they're not gonna be in these numbers at any district. So we did see a drop. So it's not like the students left. They're still probably in our boundaries. They're just not coming to a public school. So we did see a drop on that. And what does that mean? How do we put that in the spreadsheet? I don't know. So our next slide has the percent of residents enrolled, looking at history for that. So we're about 83, 84% right now of our resident kids that are in public education at our school. Next, we like to look at open enrollment trends. Who's coming in, who's leaving? And so we tend to gain the most number of students from Big Lake. You see a net open enrollment of 173 kids for last year. Again, that's the year that's been finalized by the state. Other winners that we gain enrollment from, St. Cloud, Becker, Annadale, Maple Lake, and Buffalo. Last year, Buffalo, we lost more students than what came in. So last year, we actually gained more. So when you look at this slide compared to last year's presentation, we gained more from St. Cloud, we gained more from Becker, we gained more from Annadale, Buffalo, and even a little bit from St. Michael. And then what's kind of the other tuition enrollment looking like? So we lose kids to Swan River, our special ed co-op, the Wright Technical Center, because they are attending classes there, versus at our high school, Kaleidoscope Spectrum High School, Jane Goodall, Minnesota Transitions, and Houston Online. So we did see some bigger drops or changes from anywhere to Minnesota Transitions. Last, in 1920, we lost 17 kids to there. Last year, we lost 52 kids. Houston, two years ago, it was minus five. Last year, it's minus 11. So it's just things we need to keep, keep an eye on and see if that's a lasting trend. This slide has what's our open enrollment history just in total. So we are an open enrollment loser, but we didn't quite lose as many last year as we have in the prior year. So hopefully that's gonna be a nice change. And we'll continue to see that chart improve for that table. So then when we look at fall versus spring enrollment, who's here as of October 1st and who's ending the year with us in May? And so last year, we actually did see some improvement throughout the year in our kindergarten, elementary, and middle school areas. But we still saw a decline at our high school level. But overall, we saw an increase on the students that stayed here. So our principals could probably validate that. And then the next slide has a history of that enrollment, starting in October to the end of the year. So we have a lot of years where we did lose enrollment throughout the year, but we did see an overall increase in 1415 and 1617 and then the prior year as well. And then next slide has our building permit data with the city. And this is, just has a chart of the single-family building permits. This doesn't include townhome building permits or apartments. So there's another 51, I think, building permits for this year for single townhomes. And then the apartment building that had 114, I think, units in it. So still pretty low in the building area, but hopefully that will improve. And then the next slide has our, starting the review of our current enrollment projection. So it was underestimated by 67 kids. We thought we would have 4,115 students and we actually had 4,182. So an increase of 67 students. And we saw that mainly in our elementary and middle school. And we did add two staff at our elementary buildings and then I think one or two overall at our middle school to help with that increased growth. The next slide just has a chart by grade of looking at the projection versus what actually came. There's not a lot of differences between the projection versus what actually showed up. It's kind of all over the board where we saw some increases. So when we look at our enrollment projection data, there's different sets of data to use. You can look at your October 1 Mars submission. That doesn't really work for us because that doesn't include our special ed co-op students that have, take up space in our buildings and take up staff. You can use end-of-year ADM. But again, that doesn't really help us if we start the year with more kids than when we end the year with. So we want to make sure we're staffing. So we want to make sure we're staffing appropriately at the beginning of the year. And then you could also use district data. So if you have records of good enrollment data that you're keeping, you could use that in the model. And so I used our October 1 enrollment. That includes special ed students as well. So we first look at kindergarten enrollment projections or models. You can look at what you have in for this year and project that out the next five years. You could look at a linear projection. You could look at your county birth method. How many births happened five years ago? And how many kindergartners are showing up? What's that percent? What's that relationship? Or you could look at a zip code method. Who's the births that are happening in the city of Monticello that are registered in the city of Monticello, and what shows up? So looking at county data, we have a history on the next slide that shows the births. And for whatever reason, 2020 is not available yet on the Minnesota Department of Health website. And then what were the kindergartners that are showing up based on that, the number of births? So we were averaging about 16% for the last five years on Wright County births versus kindergarten enrollment. This table has those different methods and what those numbers would be. Hold constant, linear projection, Wright County births, and the zip code average. So I highlighted the holding constant of kindergartners of 289 for the rest of the school year, but you can, you know, pick something different if you don't, if you feel differently, if you wanted to look at Wright County births, for example. But we do have an attractive Eastview Building, a lot of nice amenities there. That is a really nice environment for a kindergarten program. So we try to keep that constant, because we think we will draw students each year in that building. And then there are other methods to, to do the rest of the enrollment projection. It's basically looking at grade-to-grade progressions, and there's different weights based on a number of years. And you can, I'm not going to go into detail, but there's a lot to pick from. I think there's 17 different models to pick from. So the next slide has five models that I picked, just that shows a range, a couple highs, a medium, and a couple lower enrollment projections. So we have a ratio of five years, where it's looking at five years and looking at that ratio. A one-year average, a merge method that includes all of them together, a four-year numerical average, and a four-year ratio. So the merge was kind of that middle ground, and the next slide shows a more, a graph of kind of how that looks. That yellow bar or line is the, the merge method that was selected to look at more deeply in the next couple of slides. So again, it was the merge method that's being selected for next year's enrollment, K-12, to be estimated at 4,165, so a decrease of 17 students. The pandemic is still a wild card on how, how we project enrollment. And the next slide has the enrollment projection for the next five years. So you see that 4,165. And then, so looking at building capacities, you know, how much can our high school hold? What can our middle school hold? And what can our elementaries hold? And looking at that for the next five years. You know, the high school is kind of tight, and even though it says 1,500, it probably could house fewer than that, just because we've done a lot of changes with some spaces, changed some classrooms to special ed classrooms. So it might, the enrollment capacity might be lower than that 1,500. So they might feel it as some of those larger grades progress through the system. So still not a lot of enrollment increases that are seen. This is just by grade. What does enrollment projection look like year to year? So not very big. Next slide has the changes between grade to grade. So for example, third grade, next year is going to see a bit, probably two additional sections versus fourth grade, losing one or two sections. Same with sixth grade, seeing a decrease of 30 kids, but 20 more going into seventh grade, and then 11th and 12th, kind of seeing those big swings as well. 12th grade, just as a reminder, also includes our C-5 program, so, or super seniors. So 12th grade kind of has a lot of people together. And then what does it look like? If you went back to the previous slide, what does it mean budgetarily? These numbers are a little inflated, because I tend to reduce them down based on, because we tend to lose students. So I kind of tweak the numbers down on what we project for budget purposes. But next year, right now, unless you want to have a different method to move forward in the forecast process, it was 4,165.
Questions?
You know, back on Slide 7. There was, if I'm reading it correctly, there was kind of a large...
Open enrollment to different schools?
Yes. To St. Michael, Albertville. Did, was that, is that? I need to phrase it right. Could that be attributed to those students? Because we separated from STMA, didn't we, in our special ed group? So did those students go because of that? Or was, is that a large portion of those students?
So we saw an improvement last year of kids coming to Monticello versus leaving to for St. Michael. And this would be Monticello students. So Special Ed Cooperative has their own reporting for students receiving special ed services. That's, we, we, our student system is separate.
Question about the Wright Tech Center. So some of our students do part of their day in the high school, and then they do a block over at the Wright Tech Center. Where are those students counted? Are those what you're counting as the Wright Tech students? They counted here in our home?
So they're counted in our system. And so like this slide says, we lose 19 students to Wright Technical. Well, we don't really lose 19 students. We lose 19 ADM. So that could be 80 students, where 0.2 of them is going to Wright Tech. So if part of their day is with Monticello, we get the, all the aid for, if they're here full-time, the whole year, whether it's Monticello or Wright Tech. But then Wright Tech bills us for the, the aid that we're receiving for the time that they're spending at Wright Technical. So they're counted in our student system, but they're probably not a full, a full body in the sense for budget. They're a full body for three periods of the day, and then they're gone.
All right. I thought we had around 100 students that were going to the Wright Tech Center for tech.
Yep, probably. So like I said, that's weighted ADM. So if there's 80 kids, just an example of 0.2, that would be 19 ADMs. Or if it's, there's only onesies, twosies type classes that they're taking, then it'd be even more. That was just my rough estimate.
Any other questions, Tina? Thank you for...
Are we okay with the merge method moving forward?
I think you put a lot of work into it, and you do a good job of laying it all out and choosing kind of the best option for us. I would support the method that you've reached.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Now on to our COVID update.
Hello. I'm going to present our COVID update, and Superintendent Olson's here, too, if you have questions. So we'll just get started. There has been a bit of an increase in our data in the last week, especially at one school. Our other schools have remained very stable, but we did have an uptick in our middle school, and we're addressing some increased mitigation strategies in that location. We continue to ask parents and our staff themselves to stay home if they are sick. They have two or more symptoms, even of a common cold, to just stay home and be on the safe side. The illness that's happening across our district is really hurting our staffing. We are stretched to the max lots of days with our subs, and many times, we're having to shift people around to other duties. So that's a concern. We want to just continue to, for parents, to keep kids home, because we really believe when they come to school, we see more of a spread. So even though it stretches our staffing, we think people are being very conscientious and thinking, I want to come to work anyways, because I know how tight it is. But we're really asking them to stay home if they are sick, so that we don't continue to see any kind of spread, staffing especially. You probably heard that, you can go back one slide, please Gavin, that the vaccine was approved for five to 11-year-olds, and we have upcoming opportunities for families to choose to take advantage of this opportunity. We're working with Wright County Health and Centricare. We are not giving the vaccine, or that is something that we're just working with our community partners to provide opportunities for our families. And then probably one of the newest changes or upcoming things that's happening is the federal guidelines for vaccination requirements for staff is moving forward through the federal OSHA department. And Minnesota OSHA complies with the federal OSHA requirements at a minimum. So we will be moving forward with some vaccination requirements for staff. And this is per Policy 807. We're required to do this, so we're just going to start moving forward slowly, gathering information. And the upcoming deadlines are coming fast. We're getting started, and when things get halted, either at the legislative level or in the courts, we'll comply with that as well. So here are our COVID numbers from last week. And as we mentioned, there is, was an uptick in data, especially at our middle school. Our other schools have remained very stable. So we did address our sixth grade concerns at the, with the staff working in sixth grade, with some of their daily procedures that happened at sixth grade. And we're hoping to see some containment of that, and maybe even just decrease, please, in our numbers with our students at that grade. We increased social distancing at lunch. We basically split lunches in half and flipped half of the kids into a free time, half doing lunch, and then flipped back vice versa. We think that will really help. The custodial staff has been really great at just stepping up the cleaning protocols, back to what we were doing previously last fall. So they've really done a great job of responding to the situation. And then we're really trying to hit it with our staff and our parents to keep kids home if they're sick.
I will say, I got to spend time at the lunchroom down at the middle school today. And what I noticed is something that, you know, we're going to try here for sixth grade. But what we really noticed is that the social, emotional health of the lunchroom itself was very quiet. Kids were spread out, and it had a nice feel to it. And so it's something that we might have noticed, we might need to do this from, we whole grade level eating at one time in one small, you know, you have a possibility for potential increased behaviors. And obviously, we did it for, try reduce the sickness spreading. But we've seen some byproducts that we really liked today. First aid. It does, you know, a little bit to transition kids through different hallways, and so we have a traffic, you know, flow, a successful traffic flow. From what we saw so far, it was really good out of the gates, so.
What does the free time look like? You said half is in free time.
So the middle school for, ever since I was there as assistant principal, we've done a little bit of a reset. Not a lot of, not a lot of middle schools have. So it's kind of a fortunate time for kids to be able to let off some steam for about 10, 10 minutes. But the middle school did at a playground in the back about two years ago. And so when it's nice outside, we go outside, but on days that are chilly, we are in the gyms.
All right. And district response, we've talked about some of these, but just communicating with our staff about our staffing shortage. We're asking staff to take optional medical appointments on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, avoid Monday, Friday. If you can target, you know, half-day absence or not. And I think our staff will respond, because it is, our staff is doing an amazing job of covering for each other, too. So they're, they're in it with us, and everyone's cooperating to do the best we can with that. We are hiring substitute teachers, though, I'll say. And we're participating in a recruitment fair later this week to see if we can up our substitutes and our, our non-certified employee groups as well. So we are taking some steps to try to address what's going on, so. Okay. Vaccination clinics. Here are the upcoming clinics that are available. Wright County Public Health will be at the middle school on November 18th from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. Go to the ICE Arena entrance. Staff from Wright County will be available. This is pre-registration only, and the link is out on the website if people are still, you know, trying to see if they can get a last-minute appointment for that. Centricare Health will be here on November 9th and the 16th to do first doses. So that was, that's underway for the first dose. And they'll come back and do second doses November 30 and December 7. For that, if you're interested in working with Centricare, you can call the number on the screen and get an appointment.
Sir, do we have listed other locations, too, in case parents, for those that want to take part in other spots? I mean, these aren't the only, so I mean, there's other pharmacies that are doing it. There's other hospitals, and I didn't know if we had...
I know we have a link of tests on the website. I'm sure we've got our, do we have vaccination clinics there as well, Clay? But we'll double-check it and make sure it does get posted there. So we did really encourage our staff, too, to kind of make sure they're taking care of their own vaccinations, too, and those are available at Cubs, pharmacies, things like that. So sometimes check those locations as well, for a little more drop in available. And then our, just our vaccination requirements for employees. You'll be hearing more in the coming week of what that could look like. The initial wording in the federal guidelines, the ETS they're called, is December 6th as a first date where we need to comply and start to have a database of staff that are vaccinated, staff that are not. And staff that are not vaccinated will need to mask at work and then test every other, every week, every seven days. The testing doesn't take effect until January, but we will start complying with gathering information. Okay.
I think I'll just jump in real quick, just to make sure the school board understands the differences between like last year and this year, when it comes to what we have to navigate through. So last year, as far as mitigation strategies went, if you look at the fall leading up to this time of the year, so that's what I want to talk about, and why I want to talk about that, is because we're feeling strapped in our school system, just like we did last year. Last year, when we couldn't staff adequately, it got to the point where we had to go distance learning. That's not what we want to do in this year. So what hap, what's, what looks different this year is, you know, last year, we had some additional strategies going on. So statewide universal masking. We had hybrid in the middle school, high school. So they were on a hybrid schedule right, right, right now. And, and then we also had, in the elementaries, we had a lot lower class sizes. We were able to hire, spread people out. So social distancing was a huge difference last year. And so we have to know, as a school board, we don't have a lot of mitigation strategies left that we can do. We are doing the ones that we can do with the current staffing. And so the, some of the next ones that are more, you know, more highly effective would be things like masks and stuff like that. And so, and we just have to know that as a school board... And so, and we just have to know that as a school board, every day for this whole year, you know, you look at all possibilities to keep kids, you know, healthy and safe. And when you don't have as many options this year in the toolbox, I just want to make sure that we understand why we don't have as many options in the toolbox.
And just to add to what Eric's talking about, the, last year, we had more options to move classes to distance learning. We don't have those options this year. We're stuck to what's allowed by state statute, which is a maximum of five days for distance learning. And that would include our snow days that become distance learning as well. So we have to think hard and pick carefully, still do what's in everybody's best interest, but just realize we don't have the same options as we had last year. Well, we'll keep talking with you, and please just keep letting us know if you hear questions or concerns as well, so.
Everybody have a question? So I just want to make sure to clarify for the staff. December the 6th is our target date at this point for the staff having to make a decision about their vaccinations, correct?
To comply, those that are willing to share their vaccination status and, and provide some evidence that they've been vaccinated, we'll try to hit December 6th, collect as much as we can.
And then you said January is the target date for testing. So if a staff member has objection to vaccination, they can begin weekly testing. Is that correct?
Yes, that, that takes place in January. That part of the rule is not required to be compliant until January. But if a staff member isn't vaccinated, then as soon as we knew they were choosing to not be vaccinated, we would require a mask at work.
So they must mask, and then they must test weekly?
Starting in January.
In January. So as long as they are compliant with those two factors, they can continue their employment?
Correct.
Correct? There's no penalties or discipline or anything if they comply with masking and.
Correct.
Weekly testing. And we will provide the weekly testing or the opportunity for that?
We're getting there, but yes. And again, this, there's, there's court decisions to be made. There's legislative powers that can come into play. So we're going step by step. We're going to start by, if you feel comfortable, you're vaccinated, you want to share your card, let's start to build that database and get that in. So that's where we're starting.
Do you have any preliminary information as to whether the group that will move to masking and weekly testing, is that a large group of individuals, a medium-sized group, or a small group?
I don't know.
But we don't know. But in December or January, we'll have more?
Yeah. We'll keep you updated at how this kind of rolls out. You'll see the Google survey we send out to staff before it goes out, so. There is exemption to not comply with the vaccination status. And there's also exemptions to not wear a mask, yes. So then we would probably recommend a face shield or Plexiglas screen, things like that. Same things we did last year for that.
So are we mandated to pay for?
Yes. Min, it's coming through Minnesota OSHA. We, we could access possibly some S R dollars for the testing. But the rule is coming through Minnesota OSHA, what we have to do.
Is this the same kind of test, like you're sending home with students, or they come in and?
It's different. It has to be the saliva test onsite. Or they could choose to go to their healthcare provider and get that test someplace else too. But it does have to be a monitored test. Other questions? We'll do our best to keep you in the loop as we hear, because this is unfolding every day. So we'll keep you updated as we hear.
Thank you, Barb.
Okay.
Oh, we've got our first reading of policies of Ms. Olson.
Right, in walks Mr. Hackett. And out comes policy 808, animals on school premises. And we know, I say that tongue-in-cheek because Mr. Hackett has a service, or animal that, therapy dog. Got to hear about that. Not that Mr. Hackett is an animal, but he sure has one of Little Mountain's favorite animals that he brings with him to school. You're welcome. So policy 808, animals on school premises. Today is the first reading of that policy, but it had some slight changes to the policy to make sure that we've included some of the information about the handler and certificate, stuff like that. So updated and tweaked so that we are covering ourselves, ready to go for all the great things that are happening in the district with therapy dogs. So this is the first reading. It's went to the board policy committee, or the policy committee. And now it's here for first reading. Any questions? If you have any questions over the next short time, just shoot them my way, and I'll look into them and keep this policy moving along to a second reading.
Thank you. Now we've reached the end, so I can call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Melissa, and did by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 6-0. We will adjourn at 5:20. Take a little break and come back at 7 o'clock for our work session.